We'll call the committee, the whole meeting, to order. Adoption of the agenda will be first thing. On adoption, a favor. Motion's carried. Couple delegations here today. I believe Roberta Stevenson is here from the V.C. Shellfish Growers Association to update us on the shellfish industry. Welcome, Roberta.
Thank you.
You can take the podium. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
I will be quick, especially because I'm pretty confident that everybody here knows a lot about our industry already, so I don't want to bore you. In fact, we'll have Matt go through my slides. I know you're all well-educated and fast readers, so we'll let you read those slides instead of me. But we have been making this presentation far and wide on Vancouver Island recently. We've given it to all the rotaries, to the Cumberland Council, to the Parksville Council, Campbell River, and we're making our way up and down our local communities. But most importantly here in Comox, as you probably know, we moved our office here from Naimo seven years ago, and since then have been participating in this community in a big way. It's a perfect setting for us as we're looking out onto our farms. And also, of course, I've chosen to have a home here. My children have a home here. My executive director's assistant and communications manager, Matt Wright, has a home here. He has children in school. So we've invested in the Comox community, and we believe that this is a great place to live. And as you know, our shellfish products are recognized worldwide. In fact, the demand for our products has never been stronger. We have sold out of product. What a nice thing for us. The price is higher than it's ever been before. But make no mistake, the world is becoming a more and more complicated place for us to grow these animals. Just today, I am returning from Portland, Oregon, where shellfish growers from all the west coast of North America got together and discussed some of our common concerns with the ocean degradation that we're suffering, such as the pH changing in the oceans, such as urban runoff, such as, such as, such as. Our list is very long, but make no mistake, how things were and how things are aren't the same anymore. So here in Comox Valley, we protect your ocean out front by doing everyday water quality testing, and we're the first people on the block to go to any media about anything to do with anything that might put our ocean at risk, because we need that ocean clean and we need a bowl of plankton for our animals to eat. So the farmers are very passionate about their issues. And on the top of our issues, I want you to notice that the Raven Coal Mine to us is our biggest threat in this area. We are growing $28 million worth of product right out here, just here in the Comox Valley, and we see that as our number-one risk. And as the days march on towards public comment period, we are trying to get the message out loud and strong that this comment period is going to be very brief. We expect our communities to do their due diligence, to learn, educate themselves about the risks, the benefits, and how they stand on them. To that end, I want to tell you that we asked the Coal Corporation three years ago to put up a bond to protect our industry, to perhaps have some sort of assurance for these farmers that are at risk. That was not agreed to. We also asked for more competent and complete testing of our water here so that we could see any changes that might come later on. That has not been done. That has not been done in a way that is transparent and makes us feel comfortable. So at the end of the day, the board of directors that I work for, 11 business owners in the valley, have asked me to come here and make sure that you all know that now their answer is, the only risk they're willing to take with these guys is called zero risk. That's the risk they're willing to take. We have not had our conditions met, and as I said, we're just not willing to put our industry at risk, nor are we able to, in the future, market our product worldwide like we do right now, as being grown five kilometers from a coal mine. I think of Comox Valley as the breadbasket, a place where we're proud that we grow so many interesting kinds of foods. And we know that when we give our shellfish festival here PR and we bring in those 2,000 people to eat our products, they come here because there is the food thing going on. We should be really proud of that. Bain Sound is a breadbasket. It's a place that we all share us. The Comox First Nation is very actively farming shellfish fronting here. They've recently bought Aquitex Seafoods and are opening a seafood shop in their own name. This is very exciting for us. They can grow the product, they can process the product, and send it out to the world. We are businesses in your community, okay? We're here for a long time. We've been farming these animals in this region for 100 years. Go figure. We'd like to be here another 100 years. And I'm confident that everybody in this room would like to continue to know that they have food to eat right outside their front door. To that end, I want to pass around, and you can keep a list of all the community groups who have shown concern about this coal mine. We feel we are making good traction, but make no mistake, there's many things out there that lead us to believe perhaps it's a done deal. We worry about this, and as I said, we're just looking to you to show some strength and support. The ideal situation for us, we'd see the Comox Council do the same exact motion somewhat that the CBRD committee did on November 27, 2012, and I pass around a copy of that as well. Can we keep this? Yes, please. In fact, we can get more copies for you, and we have them electronically. But we should be proud of that motion being put out. When I presented to the Cumberland Council the other day, they quickly stopped me and said, "Wait a minute, you know, you're talking to the converted." So on Monday, when I go back, I'm pretty confident that they're passing a similar motion as that one. I think that Courtney will also show that strength. That's how confident I am that our list is growing rapidly of people who are feeling worried about this. Now, don't make a mistake that we're anti-business because we're so not. This is the first thing that these shellfish farmers have ever opposed, ever. They are all businessmen, quite rednecky in their own way, and this coal mine is just too close to the beach. Five kilometers is not enough of a safety margin to have it here. Now, as I said, I mean, marketing the valley for tourism and food when we have a coal mine nearby is going to be a tough call on its own. I really don't know how we will do that. People all around the world recognize Fanny Bay oysters, all the different oysters that we have, all the different seafood. So I guess maybe I have to do some kind of report to show that loss, but I haven't yet, so it's on the list. Here's a clam that's from the beach fronting where the mine was, and there's a clam nearby where it's not contaminated by the same ill effects, okay? So when we show that visual in the flesh, people really get it. You cannot market a black clam to the world that's grown below a coal mine. People might say, "Well, you know what? We had coal mines here before, and we also had oysters growing here before." Yeah, we did. The world is a different place now. The public is not willing to eat food that's not super safe. The regulations and guidelines for growing this food are very rigid. So how we used to live and how we live now are two different worlds. One of the reasons I say that I worry that it's a done deal is that the Comox Valley Economic Development Group recently put this ad in the Times-Colonists, "Invest Here", and one of their bullets, bullet number three, is, "Because we have Raven Coal Mine." Excuse me, is this a done deal? Do we need to feel worried? You better believe it. Putting an ad like that is just wrong, okay? We're supposed to be doing due diligence and going through a process here. Now, this is going to turn into a political thing, have no mistake. And what a shame. Are we going to vote for what party we believe in based on who's in favor of the coal mine or not? The NDP have made it very clear that they're opposed to it and that they would not allow it. I think it's a shame to turn that into an election issue. Rather, it should be based on good science, okay? But now it's gone beyond that. Now it's going to be a political decision. And to that end, I thought we'd close off with how much fun we have at our shellfish festival here in Comox every year, for which we thank you all for all your support, and hopefully we can continue to keep feeding everybody all this great food. Thank you for hearing me. I know you know the topic well enough that I don't need to go on and on, but I do really appreciate the moment, okay?
Thank you, Roberta. Any questions for members of council this time? Counselor Price?
It's a good point you made about the Fanny Bay oysters. Someone was telling me they were on the east coast of the U.S., way down south, and there and then he was Fanny Bay oysters.
Of course, yeah.
Yes. So I'm hearing that there is a very big concern amongst the growers that this could be...
This is a motion passed by all our community of growers, which is 160 family farms, a board of directors of 11 people, and the motion says, "No. Zero risk, zero tolerance. No." Well, that's my words, but they're not, they're not going to negotiate any longer because we're too close to an end decision now, and our terms have not been met. So we did try for three years to say, "Well, maybe if you did this, we could do that," or maybe, you know, but we haven't been able to reach any compromise.
So if we passed a motion, the same or similar to the one passed around, that would be a helpful thing? It would be lovely.
It would really be great. It would really show some strength. I mean, whether or not we can stop this, I have no idea, but strength in numbers. And as you can see by the list of supporters going around the table now, I think we're starting to really get some traction. And we just want to be able to say to our kids, 20 years from now, "We tried," or, "Hey, you stopped it." One way or the other, at least show us some strength and do what you think is right. And if you don't do it here today, at least do it during public comment period is another opportunity. We prefer the motion, but we'd also like to see people really hand up in the air when the public comment period happens too. So visually, that would be great. Any other questions?
See you in the moment. Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks.
All right. We had Betty Donaldson down for a presentation today, but I don't see her here. So we'll defer. Perhaps she'll be coming, might be at 5:30, that's possible. So I'll just defer that for now.
That's a good question. So if we were going to put this motion on the agenda, it would be later on just to have it on a future agenda?
Yes, yeah, it wouldn't be on today's agenda.
Would we need to do that?
I think typically when we receive an allegations request for a motion, we would put it on the next council meeting.
Okay.
We'll put it on there for consideration.
So we don't need to do anything?
All right. So, yeah, that'd be next week. All right. No minutes, meetings, or departmental reports. We have a number of staff reports. Starting at page 11, we have a report from the recreation director regarding development of municipal policy and requests for essentially a support to give to expression of interest of V.C. helping communities. Move. So on that recommendation, council support our expression of interest of V.C. helping communities for funding up to $7,000 for development of a regional municipal policy. Any further discussion? Yes.
So just a question, there's no cost to us, other than staff time working together to...
I believe that to be the case, CEO. Correct.
Yes, great, thank you.
All right. And good to see a regional approach to this as well, particularly when it comes to playing fields and recreation centers. Consistent rules would certainly help. Anything further? Seeing none, all is in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you, staff, for bringing that forward. Also, under, at page 13, we have an asset management policy. Staff are looking for approval of what policy is drafted. Move.
Seconded.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Price?
I just had a quick question. On the first page, it says, "As these assets age and deteriorate, the issue of how to manage them in such a way to ensure the full service life and that we have an ability to replace them." And I think that's 100% what we should be doing. Is it possible, I guess is my question, given the amount of infrastructure that we have to accommodate that?
Well, we've heard discussion about lifecycle before. Our Director of Finance provided some information on that a few months ago, a few meetings ago, and it is a challenge, for sure. There are ways and means to do it. Is it all going to happen the next five years? No. It's a long process. I think we are looking at some creative solutions around when certain debt issues are retired, that we could look at perhaps supplying some of those funds towards asset replacement. You'll see in our budget discussion, we are contributing to reserves in various departments, fire department, marina, and so on. So, yeah, it's what they call the unfunded infrastructure liability, and really, all we can do is keep trying and do the best we can. I'm confident with our finance department here that we'll keep working on that. Anything further? Seeing none, all is in favor. Motion's carried. Just as an aside, I did see some indications that, under whatever the new deal will be from the federal government for infrastructure funding, that they are going to be looking at municipalities, local governments that do have such a policy in place as, if you will, a precondition towards funding. They want to see, again, that that concern on a lifecycle basis is being addressed. So this is a good step forward, and it will be part of our budget discussions this year and the years to come. Another policy to consider at page 15 is workplace wellness policy related to largely the recreation center. Looking for approval on that. Moving seconded. Discussion? Yes.
I just had a quick question on the providing it to nonprofits and private business. I guess, I just wondered, this would be open to any nonprofit in the valley and any private business? And I guess this is really to our benefit in that we'll get greater usage of our facilities.
I believe that's the case. Our recreation director and our CEO can perhaps comment further. There's, first of all, the employment wellness program, but then you're talking about the corporate one. This would apply to, I assume, any business and nonprofit organization, and it would include organizations like V.C. ambulance, paramedics, for example. They were used to that center in the past. The Coast Guard have used it in the past. Assuming the military base, if they wanted to use our facility, they could. As long as they have, is it minimum four?
So it's four annuals.
Four employees. Could be a small organization, as little as four could do it. And the passes in that case do provide up to a 20% reduction. Hopefully, that will encourage others to get involved. I don't know if staff have any further comments on that?
Not really. It's designed to support local business and developing employment programs, so it's an easy way for them to do something for their staff. And we think it's a benefit to communities, a healthy area.
And they'll be promoting it, no way to...
We have put it out to the Chamber of Commerce, the Coast Row, and the brochure, of course. We respond to some direct inquiries and distribute it to some of the people that have expressed interest over the past, like the school district in Mount Washington.
Counselor Price?
I was just curious why a minimum of four was set, as there are often even smaller home-based businesses of one and two people. I just wondered why the minimum of four?
Actually, we lowered it down. We're looking at the research that we did on it. Most of them have a minimum of five, anywhere between five and 10 in order to make it beneficial to the employer. I guess if you get down to one, if I'm a single business owner, not the only person, then I can come in and get a 20% discount. So that almost applied to everyone in some form. So we set something up that we felt was reasonable that would apply to most small businesses and trying to get an average. But we did actually lower it than what we seen in most of these types of businesses.
Yeah, so those other passes, individuals can get annual six months and so on. Anything further? Seeing none, all is in favor. Motion's carried. Again, thanks to staff for bringing that forward. All right, into financial matters. Now, we're at page 23. We have a report from our Director of Finance, timely as always, in terms of the 2013 assessment. Motion to receive that report. Move. Received. Received, then, all is in favor. Motion's carried. Any comments, questions? You can see that non-market growth has been modest, in the words of our finance director, roughly $64,000 in tax base just through the new housing and subdivisions, and that reflects, obviously, a slower new construction market. Other than that, I think everything else is relatively self-responsible. So, yes.
Hi. Just on page 25, our treasurer mentioned that Department has to verbally report at this time.
We're not quite there yet.
Okay.
We're doing that one next.
Okay.
So anything further on the assessment role? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the next one here. So what we're going to be receiving tonight is the first draft of the five-year financial plan, and motion to receive that with the GOR, and then we can have further discussion. Move. Accepted. Received, then. All is in favor. Motion's carried. So our Director of Finance has provided this information, and again, it is very much just a starting point, highlighting the fact that there's some work to do to balance the five-year financial plan. Currently, $1.9 million, enough to crack on that. We do have the expectation of a surplus from last year. However, those need to be confirmed, and we're also looking at other elements in the budget that need to be discussed. As we've done the last number of years, started from a zero-based budget for core expenditure approach. So on page 27, you can see what's being proposed in terms of increases and various departments. We did hear about, of course, policing back a month or so ago. Talked a little bit about the organics collection program, and then the rest of it is outlined there. There is a suggestion here by the finance director that we focus perhaps tonight's discussion on the revenue side, as well as the additional items which we can get replant on. But this is very much going to be a work in progress over the next three or four weeks, I would imagine. Committee's a whole principle. Yes. So, Barbara, you would like to, you have a question?
I just thought that was a good approach to hearing details. I guess on the organic bins, I did have a question. It does sound that getting the right bins is important within the process, and I was talking to somebody from the Naimo Regional District where they have it throughout the regional district, in the rural lands and the urban areas, and so I just wondered whether the staff have had the opportunity to talk to the solid waste manager down there, Kerry McIver.
Yes.
That's great.
There's been a lot of discussion, perhaps the CEO and our Director of Finance and Shelley, the rest weren't involved, so.
We're still in discussions with staff at our regional district in terms of how this program will roll out, and I think, I think at this stage, the bins are going to a specific organics collection bin maybe premature. And because of the nature of the pilot and the run clearance to the volumes that will be generated in terms of material, we are trying to see if we can make the organics and yard waste combination work so that it would be commingled at the curb into the yard waste bin, and at least for this one- to-two-year trial period, we'll see what types of volumes we get. So there's a very likelihood that we won't be utilizing $180,000 at this stage, until we get more information from the regional districts. We're just, we're still in the middle.
Okay, that's great. So, but we will be putting out information, because it gathers a lot of stuff you can, like milk cartons and...
Yes.
A lot of that. And I wonder whether it is worth, I know we've talked about gas tax money to buy them. I wonder if it's just worth asking the question of the people who control the gas tax money, because it does seem it should fit, and if people can have the expectation that they leave the bins behind, then we're not left with the problem that when people move, we have to look at how do we replace them?
Yeah, it may be something we can check with. City of Victoria recently is buying a bunch of those bins around what. Sanich is rolling those out as well, so we don't need to reinvent the wheel on that, for sure.
Is the R E D going to reduce the tipping fees for the organic waste?
That's what we're hoping.
That's, that's one of the things that we're looking at, because at the present time, because our organics, our yard waste, doesn't go to the landfill, goes to a different site, it would be a fairly hefty hit to us to participate in this program. So we're trying to find out, you know, that magic number that makes it work where they can accept our yard waste, our organics, and see how the whole process works.
Well, without the organics, the whole pilot project is for naught.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, staff have had considerable discussion with solid waste staff, so that's still moving along.
Yeah, as recently as this afternoon, we were having more discussions about how we can make it work for Comox. Cumberland is already there in terms of their organics are collected, or their yard waste sorry is collected and delivered at that price point that they have raised. So it's an odd issue for them, but it's a, it's a significant issue for us, as well as for the city of Courtney, who participates in the same program we do in terms of where our yard waste goes. So this is, it's important that we can make it work at this stage so that it can work for the greater...
So is there anything that, have you and I can do with the solid waste management?
I believe that the regional district staff will be reporting that discussions are ongoing in terms of finding a solution with Comox, and we'll keep you informed as to, as to what the next steps are. But we do have time, because the, at Pigeon Lake, where the site will be, the site preparation came to halt. They couldn't pave the area that needed to, so we're probably into May before the site is even ready. So we do have the luxury of time.
So it's safe to say that we're going to be rolling the job in February.
Correct.
And I think the rub on buying the organic bins with gas tax money is that you have to own the infrastructure, and so if you give them away, you don't own them anymore, and that's one of the criteria for gas tax money.
Yeah. All right, well, let's staff carry on with those discussions, and that will hopefully ensue in the next few weeks, and we'll have clarification on that element of the budget, at least. In terms of policing, you can see that the five-year financial plan talks about adding another RCMP officer in 2014, April 2014, and the cost associated with that reflected over those years of the budget and the civilian support for staff members in April 2015. If you add those all together, you're close to $600,000 in terms of expenditures over the five-year financial plan. I think it's something we need to look at. The challenge that we have with policing is that cost drivers on those are largely out of our control. The cost for policing, as you know, in previous presentations to the council, are increasing significantly, and the only way we can really control those costs is by the number of police officers and support staff that we support. So it's something, I'm not saying we have to make a decision tonight on it, but it's something we need to look at, whether we want to carry on with that policy of one every, new one every four years, or whether we want to hold the line on that, take it out of plan, whatever.
Well, another factor to take into is that we could very well, in the next census, be dinged with pain for 90%.
Right.
You don't want to totally shock everybody, make a huge jump at that point either, so...
Well, you can see every officer that we pay for is roughly going to be $120,000 to $130,000, the inside support staff, so it's significant cost. We pay for 10 or 11 right now, somewhere in there. So that's a big part of our budget.
Do we not always reconcile that at the end of the year with time off and vacancies and things like that? And do we not generally end up in a positive on our police budget? And I know we talked about this last year, and I can't remember whether we rethought that or not last year. I can't remember.
I think our Director of Finance will maybe comment on that.
We often end up with a surplus in policing because of staff vacancies. The problem that we run into is if we build that into our budget and they reach 100%, they fill all their empty vacant positions, then all of a sudden, they've overspent the budget. And we saw two years ago with the Olympics, suddenly, this detachment was actually over-strength, right? There wasn't a single vacancy, and they had one or two hits to spare. So there's no way to predict. That's the bottom line.
Another, before we maybe go look at the other increases proposed to core operations, we should maybe talk a bit about revenues. Our Director of Finance has indicated on page 26 that the financial plan for now... Our Director of Finance has indicated on page 26 that the financial plan, for now anyway, conflates a 2.7% overall increase in the five years of each of the five years. Of course, we did slightly better than that last year with less utility rate increases, but we need to discuss that plus a slight reduction in building permit revenues. We're hopeful recovery on that over time. I don't know if there's other revenue points that we need to discuss. Obviously, for new subdivisions and new construction, that does help our bottom line. We happen to get any economic, these tax impact statements out of our new development proposals that the staff have provided. So, of course, we're now, we're in a bit of a flat time in the market. So, I don't know if there's any more discussion where council wants to go. Obviously, we won't get into a final number on this until we've looked at all the expenditures. That target of 2.7 is probably now above the rate of inflation these days, but it's something that reflects early demand in the last year. Of course, we have fixed costs and collective agreements and things like that contribute to us, increases in fuel and everything else. Other than that, Council, I don't know how you want to proceed with the rest of the budget discussion. We can certainly have comments from our Fire Chief or Director of Parks and Public Works and Marina, Maintenance are all itemized there in terms of the proposed increases. CEO, how do you want to deal with it?
Well, at this stage, we're happy to answer questions for clarification that members of council may have. As you mentioned, we still have to finalize the financial plan with the year-end numbers and that'll happen in the next few weeks. So, the next version of this document, you see, will be more complete and then the tough decisions have to be made at this stage if there's more information provided.
Maybe we can start with the Fire Chief, pick on him first because he's right after policing. Tell us what that's all about.
Well, we're looking for an adjustment in our five full-time positions to bump them up a little bit over the next few years to bring them a little bit closer to the periods of fire departments in nearby areas. I would also look for support in casual wages. These are firefighters we bring in from time to time after large fires to do water cleanup and stuff like that around the fire station. I'd like to see a bigger increase in what we've got here, but we know that we're pretty strained by lots of issues, so that's a fairly modest increase there.
On the fiscal side, proposals are to increase the contributions to the fire department reserve by 40,000 over the next five years. One year actually, it wasn't included, 4,000.
That's for replacement, sorry, for fire agents. We replace fire agents every seven years as we try to reserve money for that so we don't have a large vault to be, typically the fire agents are 400 to 500,000 dollars.
And the year where there's no contribution to reserve is because that's the year five, the next fire truck. And so, that year instead of putting money into the reserve, we put it into the truck and we dump, and we have to reserve this accumulated for that point.
Okay, any questions for our Fire Chief?
The only thing I'd like to add towards comments is that because this is a shared service, it's essentially a joint venture between the town and the Comox Fire Protection Improvement District. Although in the budget, we budget for 100% of the cost, there is a revenue offset for their share.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. Any questions for Fire Chief? Seeing none, we'll pick on Public Works. Just going down to this here.
Yeah, just for some clerical work assistance, I feel like Chief did like a full-time, but I think a half-time at this point. We have a lot of inspections and maintenance, operational reporting that we have coming in as part of the asset management as well where we get all this data, but it's not being recorded. Probably it's best that maybe we could be doing it, so we feel like there's a lack of support there and that's to.
Good. Any questions for Shelley?
So, just on the clerical, when we're up to our DR, would that mean like someone would actually be in the desk there?
Yeah, when the counter was in the back, so that's another thing as well for safety and having somebody there. So, if somebody from the public does come and then that goes back to asset management as well for level of service to the public when they come to, you know, the public works that they actually could be assisted by a person, the off chance that nobody is in that will exist.
All right, any further? We'll move on. We've talked a bit about garbage already. We've done one for now. Planning Department, Martin?
Yes, in response to, I mean, the strategic plan of Council, one of the team's things was to get our processing times down, keep our processing times down. So, we've been able to do that through modifying some of our procedures which will continue. Also, in terms of if we do get spikes in the dollar, being able to pull in additional resources in terms of temporary support and also ensuring that coverage in the summertime and some of our simpler items leaving there to the summertime is a best thing to do, which provides a very cost-effective way of keeping that. So, we worked on it even for two years out because it's about as far as we accurately estimate to keep that float in place so that we have that ability to respond.
And those two studies that you're referring to there, can you just explain briefly what those are?
Certainly, the subdivision bylaw is, we're getting better idea with the completion of the OCP and the traffic study in terms of the amount of detail that we're going to need in the subdivision bylaw. Primarily in terms of coming up with a A and Comox solution on our roads, cross standards, cross-sections for traffic calming, ensuring things that it's suitable to all the other departments in terms of maintenance and public works, fire protection for vehicles that we get through. So, we revised our, gotten sort of additional cost estimates from engineering in terms of what will be required and that's the additional increase in subdivision bylaw costs, $3,000. Storm capacity, the, actually, better speak to that.
Yeah, can you just speak a little bit on the subdivision bylaw? It has our engineering standards in there as well, which I believe were done in 1990. So, a lot of it is outdated. So, the subdivision referred through is a lot of, you know, instead of just referring it to the subdivision plan, we have to do a lot of changes in regards to the things from post-Telsberg, posts that we want in apartments or hydrants or that level of detail in the design. So, it's taking a lot of time for us to get that, those standards, engineering standards up to date. Very helpful. And the storm capacity is part of the OCP because of the getting built, we're just updating our model to see where we're at in terms of structure life, more capacity upgrading or placing of our instructions.
Any questions?
I just had a quick question on the extra staffing. Just taking into account, mentioned in our report that there was lower number of market growth for 2013 and was budgeted a year ago. So, we're definitely seeing, I'd assume, less applications, we're seeing less happening on the ground. Will we be watching and to see if that's happening and if we're seeing a fall off in applications over time, if, do we really need to be increasing staffing? And you've answered my question about the two years and most of it was just put in for two years. Is that, if it does continue to fall, then that position would be terminated? Would be a fine question.
We'd reanalyze that at that time. What we're now done is we've reduced the position of building inspection and that's, you see that as a long-term possibility to maintain that reduction in building inspection. So, right now, the market's quite, quite a bit in a muddle. Do you know that given the projects that are before us, we have sufficient projects to keep staff busy, our existing staff busy for this entire year and there are a number, for example, there are projects that are kind of swirling out there like the hotel that would be quite labor-intensive, quite unlikely that we can do the hotel, the eight to eight-month, six to eight-month processing timeline and our other commitments. But right now, I find we're using up quite a bit of staff time on the Northeast Comox and stormwater study. We're also getting involved in terms of stormwater on additional stormwater requirements on the zoning on 1651 McDonald Road as it goes down through the back of the, so there's that project that if we can hit that project, then we may answer to draw on additional resources. So, our intent is not to equalize those funds unless we get the projects in. It's just that if they do come in and we don't have any, any monies available to us, will we back into the same situation that we were in past, which is just processing timelines that we start to extend them?
Great, thank you for that. Director of Finance?
I wanted to ask Martin a question to kind of clarify. Would you say that the development proposals that we're proceeding now and we're likely to proceed in the future, if we're getting more and more off-located?
We're, we're switching to infill and there's two things that are going on. One is as we go into infill, there are custom designs on a site in response to site characteristics. One of the problems that we're hitting currently in regards to our subdivision bylaws, we've got existing areas where we have roads and infrastructure that's below the current standards. So, each time a new one is coming in, we're having to do a custom design in terms of, okay, what, even though our current standard says this, this, and this, what do we really need? Because we have a very big gap in some area between what we have on the ground and what we have in our standards in terms of curb, gutter, even pavement width, sidewalks. Part of this is that recent applications like the Queens application that came in where all of a sudden, we don't have nine-meter road pavement, we have six-meter road pavement, we don't have a cul-de-sac. What about garbage trucks that come in? So, that starts to bunch up quite a bit of, quite a bit of time from the applicants and also from the staff. So, we have, so we have the outdated subdivision standards. We have in terms of the, even in regards to clean field development, so we're getting areas like Northeast Comox for which we don't have existing comprehensive engineering servicing plans, which we also have in those areas. We're trying to reduce cleaner, less land to the intensive housing forms. So, those standards have to be customized and deployed. So, we're trying to react to both of that and as we're doing that, it's helping us with the amount of labor that's going to be into these applications is increasing.
Great, any further for our planner, Director?
So, just put that in mind of the building inspector, the work that's following, whether it may rise, how much ability do we have in our contract now or do we need to build?
The, we can't reduce, under the collective agreement, we can't use contract in order to reduce our workforce, employee workforce. So, what we've done, for example, so on building inspection, we do, building into this budget is 1.3. The 1.3 allows us to draw on essentially retired building inspectors, have them coming in and on any position on a part-time basis or on a temporary basis. Likewise, last year, last year, last year we brought in on the planning side, we had a lot of, a large number of applications very early in the years. We brought in a planning technician to provide additional assistance and then we had a student come in that under the collective agreement kept paid a portion of the tax portion on the front counter. So, that's how we're adjusting. So, what we actually proceed is with changes in processes and legislation, hopefully even when the economy picks up, we can maintain our one-filling inspector, one-filling inspector. We're right at that kind of area and we can maintain it with that. We have the number of retired people available. That's always a challenge in terms of, because we can't have that position every two days or.
Anything further on planning? All right, we'll move to recreation. Nothing happening over there, so that'll be.
There's three items on here. First item that we're looking at is how should we, use of the facilities, we're on considerably, particularly in the areas of the place. At the present time, we don't have any programming staff that can shake those times and we have a need to put someone on to, first of all, sort of probably coming in with that pressure to our programming to support the construction to deliver and also give some guidance and direction to generate on office staff. It's the area where existing staff are coming back to the regular levels of trying to then, we need to exist and certainly we have benefit to have a full-time, a full-time part-time program that contributes to the need. The other aspect of the position is that trying to, we lost a couple of staff, it was the National Service, so we're looking at trying to focus on children, the National Service, even maybe even use a volunteer to try and provide better service to that to the area. So, that would be a focus of the position as well. Regarding the other two items, the bulk of that increase is due to vacation requirement. We have released that. We don't fight it 100% for sort of the doubt. We have a lot of vacation entitlement. It's probably probably 90% or 80% of that replacement of how most people are on vacation with janitorial office. It's not an option for us. You have to replace it, you can't just say go on holidays and go to a position. So, it makes it difficult now. The other thing is we've asked for an extra four hours for janitorial because the demand of a facility and the equipment require additional maintenance. I have copies of the industry that we were talking about in 2012 and purple is changed between the other. I have copies of the.
Okay.
You can see that we, even though we suspect that things a lot lost, that hasn't been the case in terms of too many viewers members of people coming in. So, it should gain, create tremendous pressure on us to keep the facility looking as a true, as a true, as a true. That's why we're asking for the extra four hours because we need to do that. And these four hours are scheduled to schedule that as the building closes so we can get in to do things like tanking or conditioning, all the kinds of things that we can't build publicly. So, that's an important aspect in that time. So, basically, other than some few hours of additional staff to help us out when we need, the others basically mostly some of the vacation entitlement we need.
All right, thank you. Any questions for our recreation? All right, moving on to Maintenance and Marina. Couple of staffing issues there, plus I guess some reserve contributions.
From a maintenance department perspective, we've had no increase in staffing there in 27 years. I think they've always operated with few tradesmen. We've done that somewhat effectively through the good raises of having a few typical contractors that are ready. We're finding over time, though, that our managers are increasing, I wouldn't say dramatically, but certainly significantly enough to raise the question of the future volume of future. We're finding that as we all are getting older, our two senior staff, our senior tradesmen have been with us both, well, one for 26 years and one for almost 20 years. That's. That's, I'm not saying they don't work hard, they work tremendously hard, but their bodies are suffering as a result of some of that. We are gaining a little bit more each year in terms of whether it be, not necessarily buildings, but certainly other buildings, water, parks, playgrounds, all of these things that need attention and have times which are hard to find contract labor to take care of. And as I stated earlier, we contract out an enormous amount of our total maintenance needs already and we will continue to retain the services of those reliable companies that we use. But we're feeling that we're getting near the time that the tradesmen would be very valuable for us.
All right, and then I understand there's also small criteria for the Marina attendance hours?
What we're thinking with the Marina attendance position is with, again, the increased popularity of the Marina space and water tracts, and we need to facilitate more events. The demands on Jeff's hours are becoming a little more, a little more fast. It's virtually impossible for us to host, if you will, these types of community-based events without some staff time and attention. Mine included. I want to sort of hopefully step back a little bit from that role and concentrate on other things. I'm not saying I won't be there for them, I certainly will, but we're finding that Jeff being down there, we face there operationally, it makes sense for him to help field some of those questions and answer the questions that are coming from our community groups involved down there. We're finding that by increasing the hours in the springtime, it will alleviate some of the tension for him because of the hours drawn away from the other events and it will help him more effectively manage the jockey for position and will, for the quality of public isn't happening in the springtime. Spring is probably a little more traumatic than it is in the fall if we don't suffer severe storm patterns, which can pull him away from time to time. So that's the rationale here.
Our finance director probably has any answers to questions written around the Marina Reserve and Waterflood Development Reserve and the prevailing of bills already, but is there anything further going on?
Not really. I'll have a monthly quarterly financial report soon for December thirty-first to be able to see what the reserve balances are currently. We tapped into Marina Reserve a couple of years ago to redo the boat launch, so there's not a lot of money there. The flip side is that we've got a comprehensive business survey scheduled soon and when that happens, we'll get a really good idea of what the life, residual life of the assets is and then we can really develop a more, a less at heart, more strategic way of building up the reserves so that we know that when it's time to replace the facility, the revenues we need.
Yes.
So am I reading this right? You Bill, can a two-point-seven percent tax increase into the revenue stream here?
Well, council needs two thousand and twelve financial plan. So for the fifth year of this one, for twenty seventeen, I also add two-point-seven percent.
But for two thousand and thirteen, in this revenue stream, you've got a two-point-seven percent tax increase?
Correct, same as twenty thirteen and the last financial one.
I understand. And there's still a shortfall of six-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars for this budget? The way it's presented right now?
For this year.
For this year?
Yes.
So that would be another nine and a half percent increase that you're asking for on top of the two-point-seven?
Well, I wouldn't say that we're asking for that kind of revenue increase. I would say that we have to review our expenditures carefully.
And that's what I'm getting at, because that ain't gonna fly.
Well, you worshiped, that's why we put two-point-seven percent in, that was the figure that council approved in terms of revenue.
And we don't know yet the final numbers on the surplus. Yeah, it's premature to, we're, I'm sure, all hopeful on this table to keep it at two-point-seven.
But that means trying to peel out six-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars, which is...
Subject to what the surplus may carry forward. And yeah, I mean, for example, we likely will be spending a hundred-eighty thousand on the bins. As I mentioned, for subsequent years, we're going to look at leasing a lot of those. So yeah, it's a bit of work and progress for sure, too.
Well, I think until we know what that surplus is or what that true number is, I mean, we'll see good introduction.
Yep, that's all the problem, but I don't think there's a whole lot more we can do.
I guess what I wanted to point out, now that we have all the senior staff here and they've all got their budgets here, we can't increase taxes by thirteen percent to give you this budget. So rather than us trying to tear everybody's budget apart, I think you guys, and you know, you guys as senior staff members, have to go back and look at your budget and have a bit of sympathy on council because, you know, you have to rejig your budget somehow. Every department has to look at it again and figure out what we can really use and what we really, you know, what we really need and what's really a bonus. Because, you know, I look at this right now and I feel like just throwing my hands up in here thinking, you know, I'm not going to try and find six-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars in here. You know, we could, it's just not, it wouldn't be palatable to you guys if we tried to do that. So I guess I'm just asking you to come back with something that, you know, that we can all try and live with.
Yeah, I think CO has been working with senior staff in that vein. At this point, expenditures need to be looked at for sure. And again, once we know what the two thousand and twelve expenditures have been, then we can get these down to where we want to be. But, you know, again, this is an approach we've taken in previous years to show what the core is and to have analysis and get to that number. So yeah, I hear what you're saying, I agree. Just a final comment over on page twenty-eight around cultural expenses and article days grants, you know, those are increases that we're looking at. Again, article days is changing from more volunteer-based to the most contract positions. So that's been some of that's both. And we have also the increases in the reserve contributions, so that's what we're talking about in terms of life cycle planning. So with that, I guess there's perhaps final questions for our missed topic for now. We'll bring it back.
Do we have any idea what the centers might look like? I guess that will have a big impact.
Oh, it definitely will. I guess the Director Finance is the one that's really looking at that one.
Two dollars, two million, I mean, you...
Between those two, yes. I think he's been around a long enough to answer that question. You know, there's a variety of adjustments that I make in year-end. So today I hosted about one-point-four million dollars worth of year-end transactions, right? And that will absolutely change the way things look at the center three. So, you know, until I get a couple of weeks further down the line, I'm really reluctant to pull numbers out of the air.
I think in the interest of showing what the challenges are, I think this is certainly one approach that this council's taken over the years. Other councils, governments have taken the approach of, okay, here's the number, give us the budget. City ordinance seems to be that. That's another approach, but I think by having a bit of more back and forth on this, we understand what the challenges are and we give to a number, possibly council also. And who can explain them as well as the public as to where we're at. But yes, I think we're all hoping to keep it within what's at your threshold. How we get there is dependent on each other. Yes?
Yeah, I think it's helpful to see the best wish list that they have and that we all understand as things have to be, have to be taken away, that we all feel it and understand it and recognize the fact that we're all confused.
Yeah, CO, I'll leave you for any final comments on it in terms of your hearings with staff and departments. Well, in our final, one was to go back and hearing some comments at this table, have another look at this and as Donald finds the information, as to what it will end up like, we'll have a better idea of what we're going to do with that. So it's got, one of our concerns was in green, was that it is a very, go in there and look at where Marina is right now. And although we don't want, we're not trying to induce panic or stress, we want you to understand as well that demands that are on every department are there and we'll continue to work on completing that number down. All right, so with that, we'll leave it for the time being. No specific recommendations need to be made at this time, I think. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks with some further clarification on surpluses and other expenditures from last year. All right, so you have now Dr. Donaldson here. You are welcome to come to the front here and provide your presentation from the podium. And you have ten minutes for your presentation.
Thank you very much. I was going to go by saying happy new year, but after listening to the budget, to make wishes and constraints, I think I'm going to say that what I'm really going to offer you is an opportunity to think about the town that you live in and to learn something about the residents' opinion of the estuary. And maybe those, that data will help you make decisions at least it should help you understand what it is for you all sitting in this room tonight.
Eddie, if you're able to come to the podium, because there's actually a microphone there.
Thank you, I need to hear that.
Which we'll pick up on.
So I have, oops, no, I just need to kind of chill a little bit before we move forward. Really, I have a thought here, it is. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate very much you taking ten minutes to hear a summary of a survey that Quatch Watership sponsored, we completed about this time a year ago. And since then have been doing various presentations. I've been to the city of Courtney last fall, you're the first one in two thousand and thirteen, and next week I'll be going to the Breton District and then to Cumberland. And I've also presented at various public fora and the fish game presentation. We did a survey that, just going to make sure we don't work this, that involved a number of volunteers, and a few of them are sitting in the room today. Some of them talented interviews, we trained an interview team. And along the way, we acquired some of the new people who live to the valley, I call them tag. And one of them usually comes to this presentation, but he couldn't tonight, is Dr. Peter Sinclair, a sociologist that's retired from Memorial University. And at the time that I was organizing the database, he came along and helped me look some graphs, so I credit him for that tonight. We've used a sociological approach here and before I go on, I want to thank the one-hundred-and-eighty-seven people who participated and of course you, because you, the survey is a living document and you are now a part of our database, so we'll be. So again, just to make sure, what we intended to do was to sample ten percent of the residents who live along the estuary. And we deliberately avoided the current governance lines because they divide up the estuary, which is from a geographical, ecological perspective, one zone. So we ended up with three zones and one is called Comox and thirty-three percent of our database came from there. Thirty percent came from what we call the bridges area, and that is everything from Seventeenth Street Bridge through to Delph Creek, and the other thirty-seven percent came from Courtney. And we did door knocking and face-to-face interviews and we defined residents as both the home address and workplaces. And so we door knocked here in Comox and elsewhere, on single-family homes, multiple-family homes, small businesses, not-for-profit organizations, and some public service addresses. Our objective is to sample resident activities, to identify public knowledge and to raise awareness about this unique environment, to provide information about the estuary, including its physical and cultural habitat, and to inform, increase awareness about the estuary habitat through voluntary participation in the survey and then to disseminate the results. And we want to, I will accomplish part of our project's goal is I've increased your awareness of what our survey was about by thinking about the answers to questions. So this is a map and you have the database and you'll see that there are several lines around here. Now, one line in red is the, what we call and define as the estuary, variously called the Comox estuary, Courtney River estuary, the Comox estuary, high tide lines, and I'm sure you know the results boundaries. In green, we have what are the, which is a survey. You'll see that we stopped in Courtney, at the Courtney Town boundaries, we didn't continue on, but in Comox, what we did was go up on the bluff and interview sample there. We came all the way along Diet Grove, so we got the regional district of Comox down in the survey as well. And you'll hear results from all of those areas. Whoops, I keep going along the way. Must be because I went down. So my challenge to you, I have a background as educator and sociological literature, so how would you define estuary? So think now and then we'll find out how well your answers fit into the answers that came through your survey. So I'm not going to provide you with an answer right away, but there are many definitions of estuary and one of them comes from Latin. And as you can see here, it actually has to do with the sacrilegious cycle, once attributed to the ancient goddess, the mother earth herself. And we tend to use a more scientific definition, a semi-enclosed coastal body of water, which has a free connection with the open sea and the deep wave seawater, is measurably diluted with fresh water, derives from land drink. Why is that important? Well, it becomes important because people who were in the survey said things like this. Oh, the estuary is a gathering place. It's a gathering place for water, it's a gathering place for fish, it's a gathering place for grasses, it's a gathering place for people. And so our study title became A Gathering Place. And the person who gave us that name is a retired person from the estuary of Comox. A beautiful answer. I think from an estuary point of view, you should also know that out of thirty-two most important cities on the planet, twenty-two are built on estuaries. Estuaries are the incubator of life on the earth, life is easier and more beautiful here than anyplace else. And that, I think, puts a particular responsibility on those of us who live in the Comox Valley estuary because we live in the second most estuary in this province. And there are hundreds of estuaries along the coastal line, but ours is extremely diverse. And we wanted to know what people knew about estuary, what they liked most about living and working here, and what would they make concerns and any additional comments. So that's what I'm going to summarize now, but I really do want you to understand how diverse our database was and how these people really do represent the people who like you. They include all kinds of people, people with disability, RCFP, ambulance staff, retired public servants, teachers, drag wall contractors, gallery owners, and many others who are small enterprises. Our gender balance is fifty-fifty, our home addresses were fifty-four, multiple residences were thirty-four percent, and the workplaces forty-one. I'm going to go through this rather quickly because Shelley has this whole report on electronically and also read points and I'm hoping that when you get really bored or stuck down in your budget or other things that you have to do with this year, that you may break and look at these yourself on a leisure basis. This, I hope, hasn't paid too much, but it lets you know that our study was biased towards the more elderly population, not surprising because if you think of the water side, a place like the water side of the Comox, or inevitably it's going to be a higher age population because young people, families can't afford to live in the most expensive place in the valley, right? So they're not likely to be here. Tied with the address, you can see that these people have lived here for a considerable time. time. Many have about, you know, almost half of our survey were here for more than 60 years in the same address, and then some of them have lived in the address. Here are their answers to what an estuary is. And you can see that the greatest one is simply that, well, it's a place where the river and sea meet. And there was not very much understanding of why that was important. The fact that solid water and freshwater create a diversity of ecological level that allows biological diversity that makes many species thrive and grow. So there's an ecological and an economic component to this study. As you will see when you find out why people appreciate living here, and probably yes, because you probably have some of the same reasons yourself. A few people gave us very sophisticated answers, and they understood the tidal, the basic flow. That was important. Some people really were quite ecologically sophisticated, and I might be able to, to find some answers in a minute, but I'll get that over if you're finished first. And what was so interesting was a few people gave us a geographical reference. Oh, I don't live on the estuary, I live on the bay. Said bay, Comox residents. And if you lived in the zone, at the Bridges, the zone, you said, well, I lived on the river, I don't live on the estuary. Well, the estuary is someplace down there where that fish and where that bird watching place is. I'm not on the estuary, but of course they are. And a few people said they didn't know. Many, many people understood that the estuary has something to do with wildlife. One woman, she lives here, said, well, I think they should fill in the smelly, messy mudflats. They're just part of it, but my favorite activity is going for coffee and watching the birds. So if you didn't understand, the birds came down there for their kind of coffees. So these are some of the answers, and some of them are Comox people, but this one at the bottom is the estuary is a swamp, so move in. And saltwater meets freshwater, forms marshlands, wetlands, and people that live in the wild can talk about marshlands, inlets, and high waters. Wetlands, used by more than one participant. Wetlands has a particular meaning, and particularly important, what we want to do is make sure that this is a private person. One Comox female said, well, an estuary is the lungs of the earth. These people are less scientific, they're more appreciative of the aesthetic parts. And another person who was Comox said, the areas surrounding the Courtney River is tributaries of values determined by changes in flora and fauna from marine to albanian. Quite a sophisticated answer. And as you can see, the people wherever they lived throughout the estuary gave beautiful answers indicating how much they really love, how much they love it. These are some of the other answers. Estuaries among bike road, I live on the bay, I love the birds, fish, occasionally seals, birds, and dimensioning other species. Where the ocean meets the river is possible, a protected place, a place to congregate to rest. And the idea that the estuary was protected came through time and time again, but in fact, as we all know, the estuary is not protected. This shows you some of the variances in the answers by geography, and you can see that the Comox residents were more enamored of the view and less prone to give us ecological responses. The geographical base tended to be more narrow, say Bridges or on the Courtney side, where we have the river walkway. People love the wildlife, wildlife is large, what Comox residents mentioned first was the view and the birds they could watch. So these responses were from a poor minority to those that were able to give any kind of definitional answers. Our conclusion with respect to estuary, estuary residents have very little awareness about biodynamics and very little understanding that this is not legally protected habitat, but monitors for a variety of threats in this respect. They probably don't much either than those people that live in Courtney. What do we like? We love the view. Particularly Comox people love the view. Wildlife, by which they mostly meant the migrating birds. Recreation site, by which they mostly meant the air park over in Courtney. Workplace, the unexpected finding of this study was how many people chose to work in an estuary-related area because it enhanced their work life. From Comox, we got several people that do, and there were men, who said, I stop all rooms that I pull in when my phone rings. That's where I have a sales phone and I answer my calls because I can sit there and watch the birds. And another one said, I've got a very pressured job and I always sit there to unwind before I go home and before I go to the office. Another employer said, it's healthy for our staff, and they can see the view from the office window, they're happier to work there. And a few people say...
Running about 15 minutes now, so five minutes over the allotment you have.
Really hurry up. I won't, I'm gonna go...
We did, by the way, all get by email the summary.
Okay, so I just want to say that from a Comox perspective, what people were most concerned about was land and the water shaving pack. What people talked about over in Comox more than anyplace else was not so much transportation issues last year, but was the fact that they were worried about there was no place to clean boats. Boats were cleaned all over town and stuff was slged all over the place. The, people were concerned about pollution, particularly the Marina, both Bridge, Bridge pumping, peeing holes and concerns, and Bill Sawmill came up. People would love to see an air park at Turcal Center, pollen numbers, blogs, these are not expensive things to do, science to protect wildlife. The fact that you don't have easy access to the water is a problem, you know that. And what they really wanted was something that would be a little bit more identifiable as a trail. Some people said they cut down whiteberr, which is on their own. Some people said, why can't we walk along the streets and have footprints along the road with a map that shows us how to walk and make it more of a walking zone? Some people said, why can't we build something out here to lead to water where people can go and look? And of course, here's one of the better answers. Acquire the Lafarge site, it's not fundraising, to get a few disolments sites, support for your longways and even if you have to wait for people to die. The asking goal was, at the time, we collected a big issue, particularly here, Comox residents mentioned it more than anyplace else. And I will say that people mentioned models to consider. They mentioned the Kino Victoria, they mentioned the Campbell River estuary, they mentioned Pauline seventeen kilometer shoreline walkway. These are good models for us to consider as we think about how we want to attract people to come to our valley. AAA response, they're awake, they're not very aware, it's time for action. I think you've received the, the Courtney River estuary management plan. You know that volunteers form sting keepers groups such as the Purple Creek, we have river and shoreline cleanup center volunteer, we need more zone discussions and water trade. And I think it's an awfully good way to start 2013 by thinking about the environment, the estuary, and your economic constraints. Courtney residents, we should allow for the year. Thank you for having us here.
All right, thank you. Questions from members of council this time? I know, as I say, we did receive your material by email, so appreciate you bringing that to us and bringing us your presentation.
Just one quick question. A little bit of thought to creating the estuary as a wildlife management program, you know, that's raised in the past as a way to focus on the natural values of the estuary.
Absolutely, people would love to see a more coordinated approach. And I think that, to be honest, I think we're easing our way towards that, both at volunteer level and at the council level and at the staff level. I just want us to remember, keep the goal in mind, biodiversity and asset to be coined. If we lose it, it's a lot more expensive, a lot harder to get back, and all of us who live here, we don't want to threaten our own species as well. Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. All right, no correspondence. We are having a briefing camera meeting after this meeting, so motion to the public under section 90, create a meeting.
Sir.
Favor. Questions carried, and we'll have a brief adjournment.